Almost back here.
Following the order, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with the liberty of the US. Roll call.
Anthony Piper.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Richard Berger.
Here.
Erwin Wong.
Here.
Jeanne Mitchell.
Here.
Matt McBecker.
Here.
Bob Morgan.
Here.
Jerry Spiker is not here yet, but she will be joining on Zoom.
All right, public comment. There's a five-minute timeout. Please clearly state your name and the regular side.
The lines are rounding. 511 Evers Street. Not very standard recording. Thanks very much for hearing me today. I'd like to read a letter in the record that I'll give copies to the council. Dear council members, my wife and I, my wife Eileen and I, I have loved living in Southmont, 511 Evers Street for nearly forty years. We have raised our five children here and have never wanted to move. After the divestiture of GPU Generation Corporation, where I led communications, I took a job leading global employee communications at PPG in Pittsburgh. Rather than moving to Pittsburgh, I commuted for twenty-five years. I've been staunchly committed to living here in Southmont. As I said, we love it. Over nearly forty decades, our children and our grandchildren played in our backyard without any concern. We never encountered any water drainage problems until underground water work was done at Christine Court directly behind our house. After that, water began to pour into our yard, particularly after heavy rains. It wasn't constant. The mud was ankle-deep. Water also poured into our basement and destroyed our flooring and our carpet. I have invested nearly fifteen thousand dollars to remedy the water-related issues. In various phases, in hopes of stemming the flow of water into our yard and into our home, Tyler Zimmerman Contracting, who can break the work, installed a heavy-duty sump pump and French drains that extend the width of our backyard and along both sides of our home and onto the hillsides in front. And Tyler also installed very deep leach pits to capture the water. And according to Tyler, the water channel through the French drains is now eroding or moving the French hillsides. And we're planning to invest more money on our way to address that problem. In addition, water now flows onto our sidewalks in the wintertime, is creating very hazardous conditions, icy conditions. And that's the reason why I've put up orange cones in front of our house as a temporary step to warn people from walking there until we figure out, Eileen and I figure out what we need to do next. My wife and I know that these issues have reduced the value of our home, but we're still committed to meeting at our Edward Street. Over the past several years, I've had some nice discussions with Amanda Lake, Borough Manager. I was thrilled when she mentioned the possibility of the borough installing some type of improvement that would take the water from our sidewalk and channel it somehow into the street and into some type of basin. My wife and I were extremely disappointed, however, when Amanda called us after your last meeting in July to inform us that you declined to request. So Eileen and I are here this evening in hopes that you'll reconsider that request.
Anybody else?
Bob Walker, 312 State Street. I question what has been done about the fence for Berman Street? Did we get any reaction? Is charges filed or what is happening? Any answer on that?
Is that the zoning case?
Yes.
Well, that was, it was the zoning hearing board initiative decision.
Right.
And it's my understanding that the residents had appealed that decision to the Court of commonplace. So that's where it stands right now. It's an appeal to not be put in the Court of commonplace.
Thank you. I question why the borough seemed to put crosswalk markings in this area of the borough. I've been here over twenty years. We never had them before. All of a sudden, we have them. It's labor-intensive, and I don't see the use for them. My next question is, did we apply to get Cambria County prisoners to come in to do any work in the borough this year? I haven't seen them. I've heard anything about them. I was wondering why not. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, I have something to say today. Speaking about what Bob said about the fence, the murder fence, as I call it, because that seems to be such a problem. You're on the zoning board.
Yes.
You're on the zoning board, so I'm going to bring you attention to something that one of your buddies on council has done. Up on Delia Street, there are setbacks. Setbacks meaning that you have to, meaning that you have to, you can't build within a certain distance from the street, okay? And I can actually show you some building permits from some people from back in the day who wanted to build a fence, who wanted to build a stoop or a couple of steps onto their porch, okay? They had to go and get a variance. Now, there's a council member who has done some work on his property in the setback, number one, without a permit, okay? And I would like to know why this is still being allowed, because he's a council member, and why this is still being okay, and if we weren't, if we're going to pursue criminal charges or anything about the murder fence over there, which that fence doesn't bother, you know, but we all have to go through the process, correct? That's the steps, okay? I don't understand why borough council members, and I keep bringing, let me ask a question, if you don't mind, Doug. Would you like me to put this in writing and make it a complaint and email it to Amanda about the building that is in, the structure that is in the setback? And would you like me to give you the building permits of people who did it the right way? And this was years, the people that did it the right way did it years ago, okay? So unless the rules for setbacks have changed, we have borough council members who just don't even bother with the rules. They just build what they want to build, okay? And Amanda, if you don't mind, I'd like you to clarify something for everyone in the room, if that's okay, because I know you know this for a fact, okay? The empty lot of woods beside my home, that's my property, correct?
I...
First, this is common. It's not an answered question.
I understand. I'm asking as a courtesy, so...
I don't believe the borough can determine your property.
Well, no, 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 no. Okay, okay. I know for a fact, and the GIS knows for a fact, and when Officer Kesselak came over to court, he looked on the GIS and said that, in fact, that is my property, okay? But Mr. Ewald in court tried to tell the person who parked on my property illegally that I didn't own it, okay? I heard him say it, my father heard him say it, that he said he doesn't own that, but I do, okay? So I still keep asking and questioning about special favors for some people, okay? If we're going to do a favor for one person, particularly a council member, we need to do favors for everybody. We need to stop worrying about people's fences that might be a little bit too close to whatever, okay? We need to be a little bit more understanding about people that they own their property, okay, and we have, and that you people don't really have as much of a say as what you think you should or do, okay? I think if we're stepping, okay? I haven't brought up any trailers that are parked on anyone's properties lately, and I don't want to, but if I have to, please, guys, okay, let something, you know, like, let's be real human beings and stop being so worried about arbitrary rules, or let's pound everybody about the rules, because it's not fair when one person who, like I said, there are setbacks on Delia Street, and when somebody decides they just want to put up flag poles and concrete and bricks and stuff, they just get to do it with no building permits, no processing, okay, no denial from the zoning board, and then the appeal process and the five-hundred-dollar fee for a zoning, for a zoning board hearing, you know, that's pretty offensive to some people who go through the process and get and have a hearing for something that should be denied initially and something needs to be permitted for to begin with. I don't, like, and I understand it's not a Q and A, but do you guys on council, I can ask the mayor this, do the people on council get a pass from getting building permits?
It's just for comments. This is a question and answer.
I think that's all I have today. Thank you, everybody from Lake... I will put this all in writing, and I'll bring all my citations, and then we can address it that way. Would that be preferred?
We can respond to you. If that's how you'd like to do it, that's fine. We'll respond to you in writing.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else for comment? All right. Correspondents, we have a letter, an email dated 8/15/24 from John Henry Kornichardt. Can I get a motion to approve the July 15/24 meeting minutes?
Sue.
Is that a second?
Sue.
Then move the seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. West Hills Regional?
West Hills Police responded or handled four hundred and twenty-one calls first of the month of July, seventy-nine of which were in Southmont Borough. Nineteen traffic citations were issued and ten warnings. Nothing else, never did report.
Any questions for the chief? Southmont Volunteer Fire Company?
Yes. Month of July, we had fifteen calls. Seven of them were in the borough. Some were automatic fire alarms, which were false alarms. We had one tree down and also CO alarm. And then we also handed out our first round checks for that reimbursement program we started. And I noticed we get a lot more guys on each call, which is great for us. So it's working out. And that's all I've got.
Any questions for the fire department? All right. Engineers report?
I'm going to read your data. Bad news is, there's three hours from 7:30 AM to 10:30, where we exceeded the peak hour we've already been in the consent order in agreement, so we still can't check that off. To put things in perspective, according to the consent order, if you look at our daily peak flow, we're about seven hundred and six thousand gallons. That particular day, we had three hundred. Seven, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand gallons at the bottom of the borough, when we take out upper yoder, they contributed two hundred and seventy-eight. So it's not a lot of flow.
Is that a good number?
What's, yeah, it's not a bad number at all, but we killed a soapbox. Like, for instance...
Even when you back out upper yoder?
Correct. So we're about twenty-nine thousand five hundred gallons per hour on a peak, okay? The first hour we failed was eighty-four thousand. Second one was eighty-eight thousand, and the third one was fifty-three. And that's taken upper yoder flow out. So we're still...
We had three inches of rain, couple of weeks.
Yeah, that was right. Yes.
Did that affect that?
Yes, that's the day this date is. So the other twenty-one hours were fine, well, it was a twenty-nine thousand gallon hour.
We had air filtration, it was doing its peak.
Well, it did.
Not that...
I've already pretty grabbed, and then see that grab, the top ones flow. I mean, it's a pretty good peak, and it comes straight back down, so that's the direct connection. Fire company, do you have any basement call-ups?
I don't know.
Well, I asked you this question before about sump pumps.
Mm-hmm.
People have reconnected their sump pumps to Santerre Sewer. And then when it starts coming in our house, they turn the pumps on, and it goes into sewer.
Correct.
I don't know if that's a possibility, but seems like an awful lot of water. Maybe not.
Oh, absolutely.
They're reconnected to the sump pumps. That's my question.
Yeah, that's a tough one to please.
I know, that's my question. You almost have to check the viewers.
Correct.
To see who's putting the water in.
Is there a penalty for that? If you're not putting it back in after you...
So your roles and regs, do you guys just lean on the authority, Amanda?
Yeah.
So we would have to look at the authorities' roles and regs. I'm sure it is. Typically, it's financial.
We have to look into that, because whenever you're away, plug it back in, and when you're on the discon...
Yeah.
That's the swap.
Oh, Attorney Hockfield, I've been talking before the meeting, so as the consent order in agreement, it's still in place, we've accomplished everything in it with the exception of twenty-four hours, meeting the peak hourly flow for twenty-four consecutive hours. We had one event, I can't remember what year, but we were successful twenty-three of the twenty-four. That was the closest we've been, you know, with a two-year heavy rain event. I don't know that the DPD could do any. I mean, everybody, all the members of the communities are in the same boat, and a lot of them have already done underslapp work and still can't achieve the flow of water. So, I mean, last March of twenty-three, we submitted the flow information I alluded to with a summary of, at that point, we were still working on the identified illegal wet weather connections, and that was our plan. We're going to finish that through and make sure everybody passes that visual wet weather test. And we haven't heard a boot from the department since.
How does swap a first-hand under slapp, so, do we have to stop?
No, we didn't do it. We didn't do underslapp.
No, underslapp. I mean, people, they got that, they all worked on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're open. Have they been there?
Yeah, yes, they should be.
So you don't have any underslapp infiltration?
No, I'm sure we do. Sure we do.
I mean, at least...
The ones that were previously identified, agreed, they passed pressure tests, they didn't underslapp work.
Any other questions for the cops? Is that an officer report? Amanda, do you have anything?
I don't. I know Eric sent out a letter today giving them some information on the property owners they couldn't find some information for, but other than that, I don't have anything.
Splitter's report?
Just a comment on what Amanda touched on. There were several properties that were identified by law inspection that they weren't able to locate either an address or had no contact information. Somebody sent back from May of last year, so my letter indicated that I was able to determine some of them, at least some of the owners, or where somebody did there's the contacts open, that would eliminate some of these older cases that existed. So that's, that was the letter. My other issue for today's report is the letter to the Greater Johnstown Board Order concerning 1015, 1017, LeSereen Street. That was one property that is initially connected to the Southmont Borough sewer system that connects to the Greater Johnstown Borough system, their sewer lines. The agreement we had back in 2023 identified seven specific properties that were connected, that were considered Southmont Borough customers, even though they're connected to the Greater Johnstown lines. The letter basically asked the Greater Johnstown Board Order to consider that this additional property part of those seven, so that would be eight properties that would be considered Southmont customers, even though they're connected to the Greater Johnstown sewer lines. And the big issue for the property owners is that they can fly into the Southmont Borough in terms of the, there was no need for testing, but now the Greater Johnstown Board has their own testing requirements, which is not, so it's creating a bit of an issue in terms of those properties. And that's why that agreement is added, to eliminate this, two different entities regulating the same.
They had, they had, Eric, and a couple hearings scheduled for the 22nd, and I've seen they rescheduled. What would be the reason for that?
The 22nd for...
Forty.
You mean, are you going back to the...
Okay, sorry.
Is there anything?
Yeah. Some... The whole time, just drag it on, some of the stuff is 23.
Well, there's a couple that says case closed on July 22nd of 2024. That would lead to...
There's three of them, ten of them, and they rescheduled.
There were some that, certainly there were some dated July 22nd of 2024, where hearing was closed, which indicated that a date during compliance with what the law inspection indicated they were in violation of. There were some that were scheduled for the end of August.
One was telling us that was taken off the charge because they had to take zero. Each other one, they're reading, reading, uh, reading a hearing. I just said some of them were back from 23. I think they're getting a little bit old. Like, they had three hearings set for eight, three hearings set for 26, or four hearings set for 26. They reset them for 8:29, and then they have one set for 9:09. And, I don't know, I just, and some of the excuses, I just can't lie. No contact with property on the wall. Who paid the taxes? No, somebody has no contact. They even sent a notice late, they didn't, no contact. No contact with property. That's a, I mean, that's a lot. And it said property owner signed for eleven. My question is, now, you gotta just let them drive the ones in?
No, but if the others sent, and if they don't comply, given the period of time they comply, thirty days, if they don't comply within that thirty days, then more miserable that would follow the citation, what happens with the citation file, excuse me, with the measures. Sometimes a case are scheduled, some are continued for various reasons, somebody's not available, it might be related by, I can't, I don't know the specific reasons why these cases are continued. Typically, there's a scheduling conflict, they're turning the ball.
Who filed the charge? The property manager?
That's filed through West Hills. West Hills is provided with the individual's name and the address, and then West Hills filed a citation. There's, the government have two identifiers to be followed with a citation, it's a typical matter, so that's followed by...
This one says filing charges soon. That was three months. Three months, filing charges soon. You gonna wait till...
I can ask that question. That I can answer the question.
So we got one letter out, and we put it out in the new one, so we're not making a very good...
The ones I was looking at specifically from my letter were the ones that appeared to be...
Yeah, LCA.
The ones that get, those ones that at least leave it...
Individuals are on here. There shouldn't be any problem with, if you send them a letter and they don't respond, then I think they, they have to, they get a citation. You can't keep sending letters and hoping they're going to respond. The whole time this is going on, and everything's going to track, you know? I think we need to get a little bit more stronger on their case, because they're not doing what they're supposed to do.
I know, not to defend their actions, but I know that very recently, that a series of citations filed, there was a delay in filing because they were unable to get the identifier, they were able to address that problem. So I think if you look at this chart from six or seven months ago, I think this looks a lot different from what's being brought to the match.
I know the last three months, you could almost take this one, put it in a coffee machine, and have next one, because there's nothing moving on.
So I think there has been some progress to it since there, I can inquire to some of these, whether, let's say there's no contact from property, and what's their intention of doing?
They just kind of just ignore if they can.
Okay. Street Commissioners report?
Except for my report, nothing else on that.
Any questions for Sam?
How is that maintenance further not up?
We're good.
Are you still getting the information from the system?
Yes.
To do? I have a question about the street street. It hasn't been inspected since 2020.
Yes.
The suburbs look to detract.
The garage that do our truck inspections won't inspect that.
Pardon?
The garage that does our truck inspections, we're not going to inspect that.
Well, they won't. So that doesn't mean you're tolerated from getting inspected.
No, I'm not.
No. I think we need a research, have to file a new rule inspection, because 2020, what can happen in four years? You're going to do breaks tomorrow, because, you know, you got to check this stuff. I think that's something should be on priority with.
All right. Borough Managers report?
Unless you guys have any questions, I can just answer one of the questions that got brought up earlier about the prisoners. We do have a request in with them. They're just very backed up. We don't have any timeline on when they'll come in, but later on in the agenda, we do have an approval to hire one of the HGA students on the next tour day. So we do have a little bit of help coming.
Okay.
How are they... Shut up on that.
What's that?
What, how, so how are they paid?
So we hire him as an employee and pay him, and then we get reimbursed from the state.
Full reimbursement?
All right. Mayor's report?
Yeah, Doug, I have two items for this talk. A few weeks ago, it was stopped by Mrs. Westholver. She was on flooding 11th and Evers Street. She had inlet outside her house in club, and she's called a few times, and she saw me and said, what can I do here? And you know, I told her, I said, call again, and we looked at it and everything, and I started bringing it up on her behalf here at the meeting. But I did speak to Sam before the meeting, and he informed me that I'll have the machine out next week. So I'll let her know, I'll follow up with her, and I know she'll be very happy that we know that. The second thing is, yesterday, I had the great honor and privilege of officiating the wedding of Leanne and John Dees, and she had a few meetings back and everything, and I decided to go ahead and have a small affair over at Green's Park, just friends, and it turned out really well, and everybody, they were very happy about it.
Probably.
Thanks. All right. Discussion items for committees. Nothing for administrative borough services? Community planning improvements for...
Yes. We've passed a resolution to participate in... Um, yes, uh, we passed a resolution to participate, um, in plans to, uh, seek funding, uh, to do a comprehensive plan in, uh, West Hills. And we're working with, um, County Planning Agency, County Planning Commission, as well as the, uh, Upper Yoder, Lower Yoder Townships, Brownstown, Westmont, Southmont. And, uh, on our behalf, uh, the planning commission solicited proposals, uh, from a planning consultant. And to complete the, uh, um, comprehensive plan for all five communities. As, you know, again, uh, we were warned or we were cautioned by G C E D that they would fund a multi municipal plan, but not as, you know, a single municipal plan. And, uh, as, uh, thus far, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, uh, they set up a question for proposals. Uh, we received four proposals, reviewed them last week, and they were all qualified. Um, uh, one of the proposers was Michael Baker. They ranged in cost from seventy five thousand to a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. In the end, now they were, one representative from each, uh, in each municipality, and they collected unanimously, uh, the firm of the each group, uh, planners. Which was, you know, one local firm, as well as being the lowest price, uh, those was for seventy five thousand dollars. And, uh, uh, and I think there's a lot of enthusiasm, like, you know, like doing this, I mean, we'll be able to meet Southmont's planning needs. Uh, but we'll also be able, as a group, to look at regional issues, you know? And I think that's a perspective that is gonna be really helpful. And your packet, Amanda, placed a resolution. And if you could find that, or I can read this, uh, we'd ask you to, it's basically approving, uh, on our behalf, a grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development. Seeking thirty seven five, uh, grant of thirty seven five due to the comprehensive plan. This, uh, obligates us to get funded, uh, to provide matching funds. Uh, we've talked, uh, the group talked extensively about how to, how to, uh, prorate, you know, uh, Brownstown Borough has five hundred residents. Southmont has twenty four residents, Upper Yoder had, and Westmont has more than five thousand. I think, uh, that, uh, what we're going to, and this hasn't been approved yet, but I think we're, uh, I'm going forward with the assumption that, uh, this will be, um, you know, your, your matching funds, your shared matching funds, determined by population, which in many Southmont's share, uh, fifty five thousand three hundred and seventy three dollars. Round that up to fifty four hundred dollars. We're not asked apparently to pledge that at this point, our resolution is just, you know, on our behalf, we authorize the following of this grant application. Discussion. Uh, just additional things, um, a lot of discussion about how to present this to your, uh, your council or your, uh, your supervisors. And, uh, I think it's worth noting that, well, first of all, looking at the rest, I have four of the R F Ps, if anybody wants to borrow them and read them. Uh, it's amazing, every place has a comprehensive plan, and the fact that the West Hills or Johnson, I know the guys is kind of, I mean, obviously, someone would do. I think the second, uh, thing is, if we were to try to do this ourselves, uh, it would probably end up costing us sixty thousand dollars. And how, it would be a thirty thousand dollar match, we're looking here at a fifty to four hundred dollar match, and the same, pretty much the same way it, uh, work. And so this is affordable, uh, this work that is, I think, uh, uh, I don't really require it, once it's been moved inward and seek state, state, particular state grant. Discussions or questions? Do you want me to read the resolution?
No, thank you.
It's in the packet.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash O two, authorize application of the P A municipal assistance department? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Amanda, do you have the updates on the active transportation plan?
I don't have anything yet, um, I know they are still moving forward with the deadline for the, um, draft of the plan by the end of September for council to approve at the autumn meeting. Um, that's the last update I got.
All right, uh, Emergency Management?
Nothing to report this month.
Okay. Finance, Sherry? Sherry, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we got, we got together and, uh, whenever the budget is still over towards, um, the timetable to approve that budget for next year, I think we're in pretty good shape with it.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Uh, Greater Johnson Ward, authority?
Um, nothing major to report, just a, me and you about the, just the routine things in the system.
MS four, Stormwater, Sherry?
Not, nothing at this part.
Okay, uh, Personnel, uh, we need, I need a motion to approve the updated job descriptions.
These are the ones that were, you know, three, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I also need a motion to approve hiring Tyler Fenton through the H G A externship program. And this is what, um, Amanda had mentioned earlier.
Second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Police, law.
Nothing to report to Chief.
Property maintenance, streets and sidewalks, now. Uh, Shade Street, Richard.
Um, I understand, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, that we're out of budget for the year now?
Yeah, for the most part, we're.
Yeah. Uh, uh, the, uh, uh, what I plan to do for next year is, again, file the, uh, an application, hopefully there's still federal funds flowing through the state to, to do. What we need to do is a tree inventory assessment and a, you know, a, uh, handheld inventory, digital inventory of trees, and we can start planning that. Now, again, uh, we have an aging inventory of bad trees out there that are, you know, uh, and until we get control of that, and then, I, I think we did have, uh, a tree inventory once many years ago. But it's, yeah, we, uh, we first need to catch up with that and then really start a more meaningful program. So I'll be meeting with Barb Pack and, uh, working on my application for straight time.
Uh, new business, uh, we need a decision on the Westmont Hilltop School District's special event permit request for homecoming parade on September twenty first, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I also need a decision on the Bishop and the Court request for approval of term of town deal. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, business items, approve the ratification of payroll, seven sixteen to eight nineteen of twenty four.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approve payment of bills, seven sixteen to eight nineteen of twenty four. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approve transfer, seven sixteen to eight nineteen of twenty four. Do I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approved Treasurers Report for July twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to accept the Tax Collectors Report for July twenty twenty four.
Move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need an executive session to vote. Do I have a motion to proceed to executive session?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, there will be, are there, so are you actually gonna need it after that?
Uh, well, I think. Just, just, just.
Yes. So there will be action afterwards.
Yeah, small ham, or pork buns.
Mm-hmm.
Or there, or there will have some of that? Yeah, the assets, uh, hey, for those. I can just produce that. You want sewer drawn? Yeah. Okay. I was, I was, I was, I had, keep this, uh, listen, can you just walk the wall? Okay. Somebody, uh, you know, one of the, some of the dust gave, uh, that office leaks. Oh. I can do that. Appreciate it. Play that, remind me. Will do. What's up, Sam, how you doing, buddy? Almost made it the whole time without her recording the face. What's that? Almost made it, she had to hit the face. Sorry. Sorry. I hope you better. Yeah, you know, can't complain, but I do. This is the only complaint that I really do, actually, anymore, is come to this one, and the other. Also, I am jarring, you know? Tired of it, honestly, I'm, I'm just tired of the way this shit works, you know? Some people get, some people get the hammer of God put down on them, some people don't, like, you know? Trust me, I know. You know? I, uh, I miss my truck, uh, it's Easter Sunday, I left my truck sitting on the street. Easter Sunday, right? Twelve oh one, uh, they came and, uh, taking my truck. I had a vehicle on the street, I probably wanted to catch a ticket. You wanna know why? Tell me. Take a look at my truck. Really? Twenty twenty two. Hey, I wouldn't be sweeping, I wouldn't be sweeping, I wouldn't be sweeping the streets right now with that inspection sticker out. Oh. I don't care if, listen to me, okay? I, I get that. Stop. Los Lasky and Kestla towed my truck. Okay? You, you, you know me well enough to know, if I see that, if I see that street sweeper out and it's on the road, I'm gonna follow it until the cop comes, I'm gonna watch him tow it. The next time it comes out, we'll be headed to a garage. I have to. Whatever. I have to get Sleek's if they will, hmm, turn around. What's wrong with it? It just needs an inspection, it just needs a. What, what does it, okay, what does it, but, how heavy is it? We are four hundred tons shy of needing air brakes. So it's. Mm-hmm. I don't know what that, what that limit is, I mean, it's. It's, uh, it's like twenty eight. Twenty, it'd be twenty, it'd be twenty twenty five, twenty six thousand and one is what you need for, you need for a C D L, yeah, so if you're. Anybody that has a, you guys use, those, I do use to do the inspections. Do you want this? Well, okay, yeah. And they won't touch, they did for a. Cause nobody can, nobody has, nobody has a license to do it. And then, uh, the last time we spoke to Sleek's, they couldn't do it because it was a sweeper. If it was semi, a flatbed, or anything else, in the same way, they'd be doing it, but if it was a sweeper, that was, no. They can do it. Can you drive it out there, is that how you take, you just driving out there? Mm-hmm. How fast does it go? That's, it's already a bomb truck. Really? Yeah. No shit. It's a square bomb truck, and you can move sixty five in, uh, the slightest little adjustment. Can't. Can't jog around here? No. Doesn't he have an inspection license anymore? Uh, he does, but he doesn't, and he doesn't have a garage back, not that a borough could get one, but we have had so many other vehicles that we would service. Westmont, I'm trying, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to just think, you know, Westmont Mobile? What, Westmont, Westmont, uh, they're, uh. He's Bill Houston, I thought. They're, Westmont's Garage, they, uh, now have, uh, an inspection service center, or Blue Force. My, uh, my closest option is A and H, which is the backside of Pittsburgh, in public, where is it not? Larry Burke, Burke, uh, Burke Trucking. Okay. He's got an inspection, he, he inspects trucks. So, he's up, um, Taco Park, yeah. Taco, okay. Like, um. Nope, I, I've, I've been past that. Yeah, like, 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 if, you know, the, 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 the truck side, not the, not, not Prospect. Yeah. Yeah, Burke Truck, B I R K, Trucking, he, 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 he's a truck inspector, too. See, uh, the, the, the Prospect's that, the last time, uh, we went down, we went for a. He's mine, is that? Yeah. He's, he's useless. He, he, uh, no, he, uh, he stole my truck for six days. So, yeah, he, he's, uh. He, he passed one of the, from the covers, like, in Dakota? Yeah. Was his daughter's. Dude, you know, here's the thing, you know, every state around us doesn't have an inspection, okay? And you ever seen some of the shit that, 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 you know? I mean, it's just common sense, it's just more money for the state, that's all, you know? That's all it is. Oh, it's just like the emissions. Need it here, but you don't need it in Somerset, and when they do, you. You don't need it in Somerset, you don't need it in Clearfield, you don't need it in, like, eight of the nine counties around us. Yeah. But we need it, why? Cause, you know, if they redid, if they redid, you know, they. Two hundred and sixty bucks. What's that? That's the extra forty bucks. That's one of the reasons why, like, you know, we always, we always register everything down at my dad's, and it's not in Somerset, just, it's not, you know, we can't. You know, and like, you know, we're actually one of the units, you know? That one. Same thing here, he did, he registered, uh, his vehicles with his dad's. Yeah. He'll have one on the inspection log. Yep. You know, it's just not, you know? And then you got things like Florida, as long as it's got four wheels, I don't really care, you can't have three wheels on the outside and a steering wheel that way. So, I don't know if it's the same way, but I, a friend of mine, a friend of mine I used to mess around with cars with years ago, his dad was from up, up north in the state, okay? And he's still storing, like, okay, Pennsylvania had that, boy, he had to, whatever, you know? And he would, um, register in New York, it was, it was the wild west. I'll see you soon. That's good.
All right, uh, we're back in regular session. Eric, I need a motion to.
The motion before the Borough Staff Moth intervened in the litigation pending the, uh, twenty twenty four dash three zero four four, in the case of. The case of Stefan S T E F A N, last name, H A N and E V I G. Christina Shaw, Ellis versus Borough Southmont. So we can hear you word happily. For the Borough Southmont intervene supporting the interest of that litigation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, I'll see you as a.
Another fun day of yay politics. Couple of comments. They do a fucking tree assessment. He, he begs for money for a fucking tree assessment every year. They're talking about consolidating, they're talking about consolid, that, that, that comprehensive plan, as far from my understanding, is a thing to consolidate West Hills, where Westmont, Southmont, all that stuff. Um. I don't know. I do have an opinion on that, but I don't really care. So. Big black dog. Fun meeting today. Fun meeting today. Going to a concert tomorrow night. I wanna see the Doobie Brothers. And tomorrow is my mom's seventy-fifth birthday. Everybody wish mom a happy birthday, please. Thank you. If you're still watching. She's okay. We're, we're actually gonna, we're actually gonna have birthday dinner tonight. That's what I'm gonna go do right now. So appreciate you watching as always. Thank you for watching. Like, subscribe, do all that stuff you're supposed to do when I'm supposed to tell you to smash buttons and don't, listen. Don't hit your device, okay? Just, just. Gentle touches are fine. Don't be getting all like, like aggro with it. You're just gonna break it. No need to smash a like. Just, just, just kinda push the button. You'll see it'll go boom. And, and the subscribe one will be even cooler. Thanks. Um, thanks for watching, every buddy that is always watching. It's windy and there goes my camera, so. Thanks. If you like what you see, leave a comment. If you don't like what you see, leave a comment. Maybe I'll publish them. Have a good day. Appreciate it. Thanks. Bye. Turn you off. Are you sure you wanna stop streaming? No. Yeah, sure, I wanna fucking stop streaming.